So the recorder, oh yeah, so, did you want it over here or?
No.
I'm handing it here.
Okay.
All right. So let's start the September version of the Town West Bath Planning Board Meeting. I'll call the order. My name is Darlene Estrock. I have the chair of the board. The gentlemen, introduce themselves, please, as a board members.
Jim Williams.
Jerry Mitchell.
Jamie Wallace.
And so we only require three people to have a quorum, so we have established a quorum for the meeting and can continue. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Under the other business, we have election of officers. I believe our fifth person was coming, he said he was. And we had previously decided that we weren't gonna vote without all five of us here. So maybe we leave that on the agenda and if he comes, we do it. And if he doesn't, we decide a little later. Is everyone okay with that?
That's great.
Done?
It's fine with me.
Yeah? Okay. So we have added, based on our last meeting, we decided to add a line item in here for verification regarding conflicts of interest. Did you get that from?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this is basically our opportunity to proclaim conflict of interest or non-conflict of interest. So the person in front of us is my plumber, but I have no interest in this project or anything like that. So I do not feel that I must refuse myself from this proceedings. And then the rest of the board decides if that's true or not, or if you decide that I should, this is just an example. You decide that I should, then we should have a vote on it, that sort of thing. This is the time to do that, not during the application process. And we talked about this last time, we decided to physically add it on the agenda. So that's what that is. And you're okay with that?
Yes.
Yep.
And so where is the threshold, like any business dealings?
So it's very clear in the MMA book, which, oh, I forgot to bring it again. I have it. You have an MMA book?
Sure, I'm not sure it does.
It's in there. I forget the exact language, but if you were to monetarily, there's a bunch of different ways there's bias. But if you're to monetarily gain from the fact that the application goes through, like it's your business, or they're buying your land to put it on, or something really kind of obvious like that, then that's the conflict. But you should look in the MMA, 'cause I know you do a lot of work for people. And whether that really applies to you or not.
Okay.
So, and then there's nepotism, and there's all kinds of bias against things from proximity. There's this, there's a bunch of different ones in there. But I think what you're talking about is because you do work for people that would appear. And I don't know if there's a monetary threshold. Have you looked into that?
No, I think the attorney at the workshop will probably be.
Absolutely.
So go into detail.
That's perfect on the third. We're gonna have our workshop to do that. So, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. And we can ask for all those questions then. And I apologize, it's just a big book and I forgot. I should've bought it tonight. I'll bring it from now on. Anything else on the verification of conflict of interest line? All right, so applicants tonight, you do not have any. We'll skip that. Public information in comment. Does anyone have any public information in comment? All right. So we'll head right to other business. Now, we talked about the election of officers already, and we haven't, Gabe has not shown up. So should we defer to waiting on that?
Yeah, we can push it to the end, right?
Just push it to the end?
Yeah.
It makes sense anyway. You don't wanna elect a new officer and then end the meeting, probably. So, all right, so second item is West Bath Parking LLC, the appeal results. Now, I know, I was here at the appeal, Jim was here at the appeal. I don't know if any of you took the time to watch it, 'cause it was on video and posted, right Carly?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't go look at it, but, so the results basically are, I had Carly make a copy and hand it out. So West Bath Parking LLC was granted their appeal, and then basically just bounces their application back to us. Let's see. The conclusions are actually a lot shorter than the background. At the very last, the matter is, accordingly, the administrative appeal is granted. The matters are mandated to the planning board for further proceedings consistent with the decision, including, without limitation, issuance of a written decision on the merits of the appellant's cyclopene application. And that was a three to zero in favor. So they will eventually be back when they're ready. I think they do know what they still need to provide that was outstanding before. And one of the good things that came from them here is that Sally, our town attorney, had a really great training for the Board of Appeals before they sat before the, and listened to the appeal. And I thought it was really, really great and informative, so I went straight up and I asked Christine if you got the same thing for us, based on what Sally done. I've got, it's like a workbook here, all kinds of things. Ours would be, some of the process is the same, but some of it's very different. So it's gonna be tailored to us. That's gonna be on the third, here at six o'clock. And Jerry, I know you said you were able to come.
Mm-hmm.
Jim, I hadn't heard. Are you able to come on the third?
I think so.
You think so? And Gabe, I'll be here. Jamie, I think he's got something, maybe?
Potentially.
Potentially something on the third. But I have the book here, if you wanna look at it real quick. It was actually really pretty good. One of the things in here which I thought was helpful, which I didn't literally know all of them. Where is it? There's a chart in here about motions, how to win, and what for. What were the parliamentary motions?
Yeah.
There were some in here that I didn't realize we could actually check. Just kind of all. But she has agreed to tailor it to us and come in. There it is. Like, let's see. Requesting information, we're considering an improper matter, end along debate, amend the motion, take a break, vote on a ruling of the chair, you know, appeal the chair's decision. Thought this was really pretty good as far as that sort of stuff goes. I don't know if you wanna take a look at this, but we have the same sort of thing on the third to keep, take away from the meeting. And I think we can ask a lot more questions, like you had about the conflict, what the threshold is. 'Cause I, I think what you're, in your case, Jerry, might be a little brave, just because it's not like you're making ten grand off of doing some of the subject design, but.
Right, I just wanted to say, like, applicant comes, applicant comes in here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Gives you ten grand for various work, right?
Okay.
That you guys do, like is that, is that, would you have to abstain from the vote even though I had nothing to do with that project? That was my question.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question, Carly. Yep, it's a good question. And it all rolls back to the MMA rules, too. So, all right, so everyone possibly, we're not sure about Gabe. That's on him. Another thing that happened, or came out of the meeting that was interesting, was Sally was talking not specifics of us four of the appeal when she was doing the training, but she mentioned that planning boards should not have applicants come in here, put their stuff on the table, and talk to it with their backs to the audience. That it really should be up on easel, so that everyone in the back can see, so we can see, we can also have ours. So I was sitting there thinking about that, and I think if they're bringing in, they're gonna have all the copies, right? So we could have enough on the table, and then, we have an easel, correct?
We do.
Do we have a piece of foam core, these clips, so that they just bring in papers, we can kind of clip it up? So my thought is to have it right over there, we can scoot around, so like for Jamie's, we could all four be behind the table, and then the applicant can be standing right there, so then the camera sees it, everyone in the back sees it. So that was my thought on it. And I don't know if she'll mention it on the third, but that was sort of my solution to her saying that, you know, it's not fair, 'cause the people in the audience can't see what they're pointing out and what they're doing. We've had, we've had big companies come in here and do that. They're bringing their own easel to their presentation. Was she saying that everyone should do that?
Definitely.
So how do you guys feel about that little change?
Well, it'd be good if the, you know, the people that are here, you know, for public, during this public meeting, be able to understand what's being discussed. I mean, they can't see what's on the easel and are have an extra handout to look at. I mean, certainly they aren't, you know, they aren't being informed. I mean, I think it's, I think we need to do something. If you remember when we were over at the fire station.
Yeah.
During COVID, you know, we'd kind of spread out more and we'd turn the easel so.
Right.
People could see it. I don't know if we were using a camera then, I don't think we were.
No, no, we weren't.
This is before.
Yep.
So the cameras are fairly new.
Right.
Drinkyable, I was gonna call it.
Right, but this would be really for anyone, 'cause they are supposed to provide plans twenty-four by thirty-six, so you'd have at least that. And they can clip it to the foam core on the easel, and we can provide that instead of having to bring something, so. You good with that, Christine?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, 'cause you remember, you remember mentioning that, I think, probably in the meeting, in the hearing, or not here, in the training, before the hearing.
Yeah, I wasn't in the training, so I missed that, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, that's right. It came down afterwards. So if we could make sure to have that for October?
Yeah, it's right down here.
For me as well. All right.
Can I just mention one more than on the appeal?
Sure.
Probably everyone knows, but just to make sure everyone knows, because Sally is representing the Board of Appeals, she can't counsel the planning board or the select board. So she has referred us to another attorney who will be representing, not representing, but will be counseling the planning board, specifically for West Bath Parking, and he will be at the workshop on October third along with Sally. So you can ask him questions about land use.
Right, and he's also.
And all that many gritty.
Coming for the meeting on the tenth.
Right, well, presuming, I'm assuming Cracker will have an application on the tenth, but he'll be at whatever meeting.
Do you have a name?
Durwood Parkinson. D U R W A R D Parkinson. And he's out of Kenny Hook.
With the same firm? Do they have another office in Kenny Hook?
Completely different attorney.
Is it Sally did?
Is he with Jensen Barrett or?
No, Sally didn't name a firm.
Okay.
So I think he might be independent.
All right.
Where's Sally going to be?
He's with Bergen Parkinson LLC, and he works specifically with planning boards and arbitration, so.
Where's Sally's office?
Portland. Portland, she's with Jensen Barrett.
I got you.
This is a completely different firm.
So he's gonna be here for the workshop?
Yes. With Sally.
With Sally?
Yeah, Sally and he, Durwood, Sally and Durwood will be here for the workshop. And then Durwood, Durwood?
He pronounces it Durwood.
Durwood, okay.
Sally was very specific about that.
Durwood will be here when Parking LLC comes back. To legal, any sort of, whatever. Legal issues, answering legal issues we have. Anything else about the appeals or the training? You asked at the last meeting, Jerry, about the parking use. I specifically after the fact asked Sally about it, and she said it's an existing permitted use. And you can ask her again on the third if you like, but that's, because the, the hearing was on, the hearing was about the complaint about the planning board, not about whether the application was allowed in the zone. So it wasn't discussed, I asked afterwards. Okay.
See, that last back end, so it wasn't, you lowered your voice anymore?
The hea, sorry, the hearing was about the applicant's complaint on the planning board's process, not whether the application, not on the merits of the application, but on how the planning board handled it.
Okay.
So the merits of the application were not discussed.
Right.
Right, in there.
Right. Yep, sure.
So different.
There is a couple of things in this little book that are about conflict of interest.
There are, yeah, yep.
But.
And, and that, it's specifically written towards appeals. She's gonna, she's gonna change it and make it specific to the planning boards, which has some similarities, but not all of them. I think we have to deal with a lot more than for the appeals does.
Yep.
As far as appeals and things, but I thought it was really informative and really helped us out.
Sure.
So Rick Davis wrote all this?
So I'm, I think Sally wrote some of it, they wrote it together, and then they got back together and voted and signed it. Carly can probably help you, because I was only there for the hearing, I wasn't there for the writing of the letter.
Yeah, it was drafted by the town attorney, and the appeals board reviewed it, made a few, one correction. I think there was a word that was duplicated in it, and then just signed it as is. So Sally actually wrote the decision.
All right, are we okay to move on? Okay. Land use ordinance changes. So the comp plan has been sent to the state, I believe, or the comp plan has had its final revisions from the town, and Max has agreed to make those changes and send it out to the state. The state's taking a couple of months, or they have a couple of months to review it. And then they'll send back any changes, suggestions, errors, all that kind of stuff. So Max is now available to help us with the ordinance changes. And, you know, originally Christine and Carly had asked if we wanted him to be at this meeting, but I thought it was a little early for us to do that. We should probably sit down and talk about the ordinance changes, and how often we wanna meet, what, what we're looking to do, and when we can meet, sort of thing. So I can tell you that the comp plan met twice a month, and they tried to meet three times a month, but it was too much for people, and I agreed with that, so we met twice a month. And the meetings are usually a couple of hours, and what would happen is, is we pick a section, and we'd sort of make comments on it, and then Max would go back and make the changes, and then we'd hit another section, and another section, and another section. So going through it. And I think he'd probably do the same with land use ordinance. But first of all, we need to get him in here, so we can talk about how he wants to move forward. But I thought it would be a good idea to discuss what we were looking at as far as commitment, and when we could meet, and how often we could meet before he came in. And what happened with the comp plan is, is some meetings he wasn't there, we just sort of looked at amongst ourselves and made comments and discussed it, and then it would go to him, and then he would make some changes. I think he was coming once a month for a while until the end. He was coming almost every time, right?
Right.
Yeah. So in the beginning, we'd meet with him one night, and then the second night of that month would be just us, and then we'd, you know, rotate through. So I guess he's doing a bunch of these. So what's your thought on frequency or?
Would the idea be that we would meet two, well, just saying, for example, if we met two times per month, that would be two times specific to that meeting and not necessarily for the monthly meeting, which would be three times per month?
Yes.
Per meeting.
Yes, I've been meeting three times a month for that thing for the last two years.
Well, I guess my feeling is we should really meet in the max to see just how many changes we could have. I mean, I'm completely reorganized, I mean, totally reorganized, or we gotta just do some tweaks here and there, or, you know. So, I mean, we really need to decide what we're gonna do before we, you know, how long it's gonna take, I guess.
I totally agree. I think it's all of the above. He wants to reorganize it and renumber it, so that it's easier to find things. And there's a lot of holes. We found a lot of problems over the years that we haven't been able to fix. And then there's a bunch of stuff coming down because of the comp plan. There's a lot of stuff in the comp plan that, that we now have to add things into the book. And we know that we have deficiencies on the waterfront, that we're not, aren't included in there, there are in the state. So there's, there's a lot, there's a lot of work. So I agree, we should, we should talk with him first, I just was trying to get an idea of, you know, we don't wanna meet twice a month, 'cause we're already meeting once a month, you don't wanna do three, or every week is fine. And I just thought we had a chat without him here first to kind of hash that out, so we knew what we're doing. And I just wanted to relay to you some of the information from how the comp plan worked. And it works really well, and he's good.
How long did the comp plan take?
Two years.
Huh?
Two years.
Two years, so.
Yeah, the original.
Should it be quicker for the, the land use ordinance?
Hard saying.
In my mind, it's a longer complex, a comp plan.
Well, yeah, I mean, the comp plan to me is, the comp plan is necessary and required. The ordinance is necessary and required. The comp plan is sort of a guide and a wish list with the mandated things that the state have to have in there. The ordinances are the rules and what we have to live by. So in that sense, I think that it's more important, and it's probably more complicated than the comp plan.
Well, right now, we have at least a page of fine print, just for exceptions, for camp roads and all these other things. I mean, it's, 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 it's a fairly complex document.
It is.
I think Jonathan tested that.
Yeah.
You know, so, I think a couple times a month is, we have to think about Max's plan, too, and how he's gonna have to react to it, and, you know, go back and change things and so forth, and prep for the next meeting, and we have to think about his plan.
Right, right, and, you know, we gotta need to work all that out, so yeah, so we can.
I mean, I could, I could see us meeting twice a month, but, you know, it depends on others here, and it depends on what Max can do, and.
Winter's better for me, you know, so I can meet more in the winter. Jamie, did you get rid of a baby, right?
Well, it's a, it's not a, I don't know if it's a thing like, yeah, we can do it this winter, but we can't do it in the spring. I'm not sure that that's gonna be the case, but.
But are we looking to have something for the next town meeting?
My.
Do you think we'd really have to rush it with that?
Yes, I think a member or two of the selectmen thought that we'd have everything fixed and ready for the main meeting, which means it has to be done and vetted by the lawyer by like the first of April, which seems like an impossible feat to me. But it seems a little fast for me.
And if we don't make it, we just do it the next year, right? Like it just rolls into the next.
Right, and, and they've also talked about having special meetings, like, so the, the comp plan is gonna have a special town meeting to have adopted once it's finished. They're not waiting until May, 'cause the town has to vote on the comp plan, too. So whenever that's ready, there's gonna be a special town meeting to go and vote on the comp plan.
And they were just voting on all of it, or just one?
Okay. I'm thinking that they're so extensive that it may turn into that, because sometimes, in the past, we've done little sections, right? So I think if we're gonna go through the entire thing, it's probably gonna be one of these, take this book and replace it, this one in its entirety. 'Cause he's, he's already, I gave him the section on the site plan, and the first thing he did was renumber everything in the, in the copy that he got. He's like, well, we, we number it to make it kind of layout better, and I don't disagree at all. So I think he's gonna completely renumber everything, so all the, all the section references are gonna have to change. So I'm ninety-two percent sure that we're gonna be just throwing out the old one pretty quickly. Unless the selectmen decide that they want us to work on one half of it and not, I don't know. I think they just want it done, am I right? It seemed in, in meetings when we've discussed it, that they just want it one and done.
That's, that's.
And then everything we have.
It doesn't mean that, I don't think, it means that they wouldn't consider another approach. But it will definitely be a complete revision, as Darlene said, rather than an amendment. It's gonna be a revised document or documents.
Yeah, and I, I think there's ways to reorganize it to make it easier to re, it's, it's basically the, the one in nineteen seventy-nine that they started with, it's just had stuff added and shoved in here and put over there, 'cause it looked like it meant it should be over there, or maybe it should've been over here. I mean, we've done changes over the years, but would you, would you agree, John, it's just kind of, it's, it's tough to find things.
Some of it's been built on and built on over the years.
Right, it's, it's like a, it's like an old farmhouse, started out really small and added to it big, with eight different additions on it. It just doesn't quite.
Yeah.
Work well.
So it's like starting, starting on the first page and just work your way through it.
Yes. Yeah, so I think it's gonna be an extensive piece of work.
I don't know.
And I agree with you, I'm hoping I'm better in the winter, too, but.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, we, we thought that the comp plan was gonna be a year, turned it into two. Like I have the old schedule and the old contract that the comp plan is gonna be done in June, and we were gonna start last year. Twenty twenty-two, June, with the land use stuff. So it just says we're gonna start and keep going. I have our proposed work list that we gave him two years ago when we started talking about this. I asked him, he still hasn't. I still have my marks in the book, and you guys have a bunch of different things in the book marked up, the changes.
I've got some things.
Well, that was quite a, when you started, there was quite a list going already, right?
Yeah.
That you had there?
Yeah.
You guys are darned.
Two pages.
Don't matter to me.
And a lot of those kind of general things, too.
Yeah.
There's a lot of specifics in there, so. All right, so do we want to ask Max to come? I don't, I don't, how do you guys feel about having it during, at the end of one of our meetings?
It totally depends on the applicants that are, right? You know, if it's, if there's a bunch of applicants that could go over late, right? And I think it's usually the things we don't know.
Right, you never know.
I don't know how flexible Max is, if you could.
Lives in down with Scott, so.
No, wait, yes.
Double him over to the end.
Yes. Yeah, I think it's a little fair to do that. I think we should just have soccer meetings.
Yeah.
And then if we ended up done early one night, we could talk about some of the changes that we talked about at our last meeting or something. But I wouldn't wanna tie Max down to come at six and hang out until eight fifteen, and then we're quitting at eight thirty and we can talk to you for fifteen minutes. Wouldn't be so good. So do we wanna set a day to see if, or a few home to see then for Max, if he can come?
Yeah.
So we've got training in October and meeting in October. So what do you think about November, or we can do it at the end of October? 'Cause we got the training on the third, our meeting on the tenth. So two weeks after that, it's like the twenty-fourth. First of all, Tuesday nights still good for everybody? Is that a better night for everyone, Tuesday?
Well, I'm sure it might.
Okay. So if we stick with Tuesdays, we've got. Okay, so if we stick with Tuesdays, we've got October twenty-fourth or the seventeenth. Any preference?
I'll agree on the third, and then the tenth.
Yes, we do.
So, I'd say at least the twenty-fourth, we're gonna be in October, if that's acceptable, no matter how.
Yeah, I was trying to look for like a few different days to throw at him to see if he was available. So, the twenty-fourth, we're up here.
That's fine.
And then it could be November. What's the first Tuesday in November? It's like the seventh.
It's election day, isn't it?
It's election day, so you can't.
Yeah, that won't work. All right, the fourteenth is our meeting, so the twenty-first. Which is the Tuesday, or Thanksgiving?
No.
It is. It's crazy. Mm-hmm. Is there another day in the week of November sixth that works? Like, the ninth, which is a Thursday, or I don't really wanna do Mondays or Wednesdays, or Mondays or Fridays, probably. The eighth or the ninth. November?
I can do, I can do whatever, yeah.
Yeah?
Sure.
Yeah?
Sure.
All right, so eleven, eight, eleven, I'm not saying we meet all these, I just wanna do them some days to choose from. And still in October, you guys don't wanna do it before the twenty-fourth?
It's where we have a meeting the third, right?
We have a third, and we have it on the tenth.
It's up to these guys. I'm gonna do whatever.
And again, I mean, it's not like we're meeting twice in October, we just have to give them a day that works. And whenever that day happens, you're not supposed to be here, it's okay.
Great.
Jim, what do you think?
It, uh, doesn't matter.
Just have to give them four different days to choose from. So you need to pick one more. It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
About October seventeenth? Okay. All right, so do you mind calling, you know, reach out to Max?
Max?
We've got it now. Ten seventeen, ten twenty-four, eleven eight, or eleven nine? I think those are all good. Yeah. Hopefully.
Well, they stood the comp plan, we need Mondays.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so the number's available on Tuesdays usually, isn't it?
Right, I just was wondering, because Max obviously works with a number of towns, but.
Right, yeah.
So.
Well, this is just the first one, and then we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Um, and if he can't, any of those, because he works with someone every Tuesday, then, well, the ninth isn't.
Yeah, there's a Wednesday in there, so.
And the Thursday.
Yeah, there's a Wednesday and a Thursday in there, so we'll figure it out.
All right, perfect, um, and then, does anyone have any other business? They wanna discuss, bring up?
I'll let you introduce my offices.
Yeah, he's not, um, do we wanna do it anyway? Do we wanna?
Well, I think it's time. And we're, we should, we should, yeah, so.
You don't think?
I'll get it, wait.
It's fine, but I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we, we said we'd wait, but it's.
We've been waiting for seven meetings now.
We've been waiting. Yeah, we've been waiting, okay, all right, then, um, I move, I don't have to move, it's on the business side of it, um. So let's just do election of officers, even though David's on here. Um, anyone want to nominate for chair? We do chair first, somebody vice chair, and then we'll be done.
I know that we keep our existing offices, chair and vice chair.
We can do one at a time.
I nominated Jim.
Declined.
For chair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Declined.
Thank you.
I'm nominated, I'm nominated.
I was nominated.
Second.
And a second, okay? Since he's declined, can't really, um, all right, all those in, at further discussion of nomination of me as chair. All right, all those in favor of me as chair? All right, unanimously, okay, so vice chair? Any nominees for vice chair?
I nominated Jamie for vice chair.
Wow.
Second.
All right, Jim's gonna second it. Any further discussion? All right, having none, all those in favor of Jamie as vice chair? Are you? And that's unanimous for Jamie for vice chair.
Congratulations, Jamie.
Congratulations, Jamie. No me.
Congratulations.
Good luck, right? I think good luck, congratulations. All right, so we've, so we've done that, and, and, you know, I don't think he wanted to anyway, but I don't know.
What?
I don't think he wanted an office position anyway, so I think we're okay, but.
If he wanted, he'd probably show up, but.
Yeah. Uh, other business, we go back to the business. So the train, there's a training, right, from Thursday?
Tuesday of?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, Johnson Baird training.
The one in Portland.
Yep.
So, I'm going, but I'm just, I'm letting everybody know that there's a training in Portland on Thursday evening.
Yeah, that's the one that is, um, yeah, I don't know which one it is, so the, so I think we're all going to that too, right?
Is there a client seminar, right, they do annually?
Yeah.
Is it good training? Is, is it worth going for?
Yeah, I think so.
They cover a lot of different issues and a lot of my views, so I think it's, it's definitely worthwhile.
The room's always packed.
Yeah, if you don't like it, you can just go, crack the barrels right now, so. Yeah. And Chipotle, um, so now I remember the thing that I have gotten. Um, conduct guidelines for elected and appointed officials and town staff. It was brought up at the last selectman meeting that I was at, but would you say ninety-two percent haven't filled these things out?
Yeah, that's just off the top of my head.
Ah, so two percent, how many people have them done, so. Mine is done and here, Carly.
Excellent, thank you.
Apologize, I didn't have it with me.
Does anyone else need something to sign?
I think I already signed mine.
I don't need calling, I know that Jamie is.
I signed mine, but you guys gave it up.
Perfect.
You should do that, too.
I didn't check before I gave it to you.
So it might be only like eighty-nine percent. And I'm, should clarify, she meant the whole town and all the committees.
Yes.
Not, you know.
Yeah, not just the planning board, everybody.
And the selectmen haven't even signed it, so I didn't feel so bad, it's okay. So, there was that, um, okay. Are we all set with our business? Anyone's good? All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes. And, let's see. Carly, are you sure it was one point four seven acres? I was pretty sure it was one point five.
I looked the two lots together.
Otherwise, they're not allowed the two businesses. I thought it was one point five one. Do you remember?
Whi- which?
I'm sorry, this is, um, for, uh, Jorgensen. Jorgensen's lot. Remember the discussion? So they're separated, and there's two buildings, but together it was like at least one point five, I thought it was one point five one. So that if they do combine it, they can still have two businesses, we had that whole discussion. And.
Right, so they go for one and then a half for another. What'd you say it was?
One point four seven. We need to check that, because if it's one point four seven,
Now, Jorgensen are, they're gonna use the building by the road for an office and then the building in the rear for.
But there's only one business right now.
It's one.
Right, but we had conversation with him about if they could combine it and still have two businesses because they had one point five acres or more.
Uh, well, I would say there has historically for the last, I don't know how many years, been two businesses there.
Because it's two separate lots, there can be two businesses there.
So, there've been two separate lots.
They've been two separate lots, and he asked about joining them, and we told him he could because it was over one point five acres. So this one point four seven needs to be verified before we do these minutes.
I mean, I don't know, we approved it, right?
Hmm?
I mean, that is, we want to approve. We approve the business, we did.
I'm sorry, I'm approving these minutes, because the business is approved, but it's on two different lots, he has not joined the lots. But during our conversations, we said, since you're at one point five, I thought I saw a plan that said one point five line on it. Totally. So you see my problem, I mean, if if it's really one point four seven, we should not have told him that.
Right, yeah, well.
Only told him that because I saw a plan that said one point five.
If it's only one point four seven, he better leave them the way they are, right?
Correct.
So.
So I'm not saying you can't approve his business, Jerry, I'm saying we can't approve these minutes until that's figured out.
Gotcha. Right.
I assume that's what Carly was wanting to go.
I hope, yeah. So, and, and I couldn't remember, so I asked her to put the acreage in here when she did the minutes, and then this is just if it's really one point four seven. We gotta circle back with him and tell him.
Well, I'm a little confused, because this is the minutes of more than a day. And we're not trying, we can't redo what we've done.
I'm not saying that we redo what we've done, I'm saying that we did it based on the fact that it was one point five or one point five one. So you can't put a meeting in as one point four seven.
I just remembered that we had, there were two lot, there were two uses there.
Right.
And so we said no problem, because it's already, it's already two different businesses now.
Which is valid, because it's two businesses and two lots. When he talked about joining them together was when we had that conversation.
So the total acreage, did you find it?
Yeah, yeah, I just.
But, I guess.
So you got one point oh seven on one and point four zero on the other.
That's one point five four.
One point oh seven plus point four equals one point four seven.
I thought you just said point four seven.
Uh, one point oh seven and point four zero.
Okay, so the plans that he, do you have the plans that they had?
Yeah.
Can you grab those and see what the acreage on that was?
Well, it wouldn't matter, because it was one business, so there was another acreage from one business.
Yes, but during the meeting, we told him that he could have two there if he joined the parcel together, still because he had one point five acres. So if that's not true, we need to tell him that that's not true, and we need to change these minutes. Because that would have been an error. Could have sworn those plans had one point five something on them.
No, we, we've approved this, and this is all water over the dam, we've approved it, it's done, whether it was right or wrong. You know, we voted on it, and it's done.
What we approved was right.
Okay, but we can't change it.
I'm not trying to change it.
Well, you know.
I'm trying to fix the answer to one of his questions for something down the road. He asked about joining the lots together.
Yeah.
And we said, if you join the lots together, you can still have two businesses here because it's one point five acres. And if it's not one point five acres, then that is wrong. The way it is now, what we approved is correct. There's nothing wrong with what we approved and what he's doing right now. He asked about future down the road and gave us a scenario, and we answered it.
I found something.
So.
So that's the problem with changing the minutes, because when you gave me the corrections, you said to put in exact acreage, but that's not what was talked about in this meeting, so these minutes don't make sense, because it says, like, I think the last line of the third paragraph should be taken out, because you talk about.
I understand, but we need to figure out what this number is first, Carly, before we change anything.
So, Jason has Jason has one point five two.
Yeah, see, that's what it is.
That's based off of the.
Or the survey is right and the card is wrong.
I, yeah, the card being wrong is not, you know, we're not, we're surprised at all there. You know, they're not, no, no cards.
And maybe next time.
That's just for assessing the survey, so.
Carly, next, next time, maybe use the plans instead of the card. Because the plans are what we looked at, and the plans are what we reviewed.
The numbers need to be stated in the meeting, so that the minutes can go off of what's happening in the meeting.
I, I did say them in the meeting, I said, you know, you're open one point five acres, so you can't do this.
He had, he, they wrong surveyed it, right?
It's recently been surveyed, David had it done.
Yeah.
Right. Sorry for all the dating, John, I just.
Yeah, the survey the survey reads one point five two.
Okay, so this.
Yeah.
So this is one point five two, not one point four seven?
Right.
And so based on the plan that we have, the survey that we had that is correct, and the card is wrong, somehow?
Yeah, and this was as of July twenty-two.
Yeah, so I.
Pretty recent.
That's what I thought, okay.
What's the process now, Christine, for updating the tax cards?
Well, when we're made aware of a discrepancy, we would just take that survey and.
Well, now that the law's gone, right, what's the process?
Right, we would take that survey, we would send it to Parker appraisal, and they would make the change. And we would, we would change the data and then do that.
Right, so I think as far as the minutes go, we just need to change it to one point four seven, one point four two. You guys all agree? Five two, is that it?
It's a one point.
I'm sorry, one point five two.
One point two.
And then everything that happened in the meeting is all accurate and good, and all of um, our discussions with him are still good, based on the one point five two. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay, all agree, thank you. Let's see. Thank you for looking that up.
No problem.
Sorry for running around. Keep us out of trouble. And then it's down at the very bottom again. One point five two is one point one point four seven, one point five two.
I'll just read number seven, and it says, Christine, you're, that the, the Miss Poland stated that we're due to the board to determine whether or not that. I'll just read number seven and it says, Christine, your, that the, the Miss Poland stated that we're going to do it with the board appeals determine whether or not the application is allowable with use. But they didn't determine that, right, from what we're hearing?
No.
But, but we can ask the lawyer.
I think that's probably bad.
Yeah, they, they weren't arguing the use. They weren't.
It was more about procedure.
It was about procedure and the bias, so. Does anyone have any comments to introduce?
I don't know.
Jamie? Oh, sorry, not done. Jim?
I don't know. I don't have any.
Sure, I think that 1.47 is just in two places, so if that can be corrected, that would be great. Um, motion to approve minutes as amended.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Yeah, honestly, thank you, Carly. The minutes are always long and hard to do, I actually. It's real fun. That's who we got. Alright, um, my next meeting, I'm sorry, our workshop is gonna be on October 3rd. Our regular meeting is gonna be on October 10th. Oh, if parking, West Bath Parking LLC comes back. So, I should have like talked about this during the appeal results, but, um, one of the arguments was that we don't have for site plan a preliminary and then a final step. So we improperly did it that way. I guess my argument is if it's not done, then what does it matter whether you call it preliminary or final? It's just, they come, they present things and it wasn't all of it, so they had to come back, no matter what you call it, you know?
Right.
The, the, you were there and the, the argument of, you know, we don't have preliminary in our book is true.
Their plans were still preliminary.
But they still were preliminary because of the fact that they hadn't given us everything that we needed and.
Right.
So, so anyway, it went around and around. So if, um, when they are coming back, I don't know when, but when they come back, it will just be for site plan approval. And if it's all there, then it'll be a final. If it's not all there, then it will be a denial with, you need more stuff. Um, so I'm just, it won't be a preliminary, anything. Um, but then it brings us to the hearing. So we've had hearings on it. We've had a few people come, but almost no one come. Um, so I guess I'm asking the board if you feel that we need to have another hearing if they come back. If, when they come back, just to help Carly to know what to do when the application comes in, whether she's gonna post it for, um, a hearing, which has gotta happen like 15 days or something like that.
You're talking about public, public hearing?
Public hearing, yeah. Yeah, having another public hearing.
And we've had two so far.
We've had two. We've had two so far because, um, usually we do that at the preliminary stage and the first one, there was a lot of, um, discussions. So we had a second one thinking that the adjacent across the street owner could come, couldn't, so.
I would say that unless there's substantial change in their proposal, we would not need another public hearing.
Okay, that's fair. What do you guys think?
I think like the first time we had a public hearing, uh, FWW showed up, right, and Pockett showed up.
Pockett? The first one?
No, that was the Sleddman's workshop.
Yeah.
For the DMT.
Yeah, that was not, that was not one of the, yeah, no one showed up for the hearings.
David was out of town.
Yeah, he was out of, out of country.
And then we had another one, right, then we had another meeting, nobody showed up, so I don't think.
Right, we had two, um. So.
Yeah, I don't think, I think everybody.
I think this, yeah, at this point, it's up to our discretion if we have a third hearing. It seems excessive. Uh, I like your idea though, if it comes in completely different. Sure, probably won't, but if it does, then we can decide at that point because it comes in 22 days before the meeting and then.
You still need to look at it before.
Right, so that you've got like seven days to look at it to see if it's crazy and different, um.
I'm sure it probably won't be.
Yeah. So how about I make a motion that we don't require a hearing when they come, when West Bath Parking LLC comes back in for approval unless there's significant changes to the design. And that one of us will check it and make that decision in the first three days or whatever. Is that fair? Does that sound good? Just to see whether it's changed or not, one of us has to come in here and look.
Well, I'm a little uncomfortable not having the applicant here to speak when we're acting on the procedures that we may use when they may come back. So I'm not sure we, if that's a, it's something we wanna do, but.
I'm not sure what you mean. It's just deciding.
The applicant is not here. The applicant cannot speak, you know, I mean. I get no notice that we're gonna discuss this, so, you know, should we really be procedurally? Should we be considering whether or not, uh, what our procedure's gonna be if they come back and, or when they come back?
Um.
Should we wait for them to come back and then decide or, you know, to actually look at the.
How would that work? We don't meet as a board until they actually are before us with their application, so how would that work?
If we looked at it and we decided they need to be a public hearing, then we, we'd go that it needs to be a public hearing. We'd mean, we have to make arrangements for that public hearing.
Right, but I'm, I'm putting a motion.
Put it in the paper.
Putting a motion on the books that all of us agreed to so that we don't have to meet again to decide what to do.
I know.
Unless.
But we're, okay. I mean, I, I've said it, so.
It's an if and.
Yeah.
And I, no, I'm just trying to understand your concern because it's, it's us setting our process, which really has nothing to do with the applicant. Right?
Well, it's in favor of the applicant if he will, so I don't think they're objective, but still. Uh, we're taking some action on West Bath Parking LLC and the procedure and the applicant is not here to hear us and to see their piece and whatever.
Okay.
So, uh, procedurally, I'm not sure that's what we wanna do, but, um, I understand what you're trying to do and trying to facilitate things, but.
Okay, so would you.
If you think it's okay, we'll let this ride. We can vote on it and.
Would you.
We'll, we'll move on.
Would you rather that we just say we will have a hearing?
No, because I think unless there's, they've already, they've already had two public hearings. So unless there's substantial change, and I mean, I don't even know why we need to have a vote frankly, because they've had two public hearings. If they come in with a substantial change, then we can say, okay, uh, you've made substantial changes here, um, you know, we, will we decide yes or no on another public hearing?
Well, we're not supposed to make decisions outside of this room, so that's why I was trying to stop today, is, correct?
Oh, I'm not asking for that. What I'm saying is when the applicant comes in.
Mm-hmm.
On the 10th or whatever it is and, and they've made substantial changes, at that time, we can rule on whether or not there needs to be another public hearing.
But then that delays it another month. If we have to have a public hearing, we wait to tell them till the day that they come in for their review.
Well.
Correct? Is that what you're proposing? I'm trying to understand what you're.
I don't feel comfortable taking action without the applicant here and it's, it's like, uh, I understand what you're trying to do and trying to facilitate things, but the, uh, we don't know what they're gonna come back with. We assume it's gonna be very similar to what they've already proposed. Jamie mentioned about, you know, one way out of the entrances and the lights have changed and so forth and some other issues, but I don't know why we have to even act on it because there's been two public hearings. I mean, why? I mean, you know, why do we even have to, you know, act on as a board? Especially without the applicant here.
Act, act on, act on what? Whether we're deciding to have a hearing or not, you mean?
Right, yes.
Because it's up to us to decide. It's to our discretion if we're gonna have a third hearing or not.
Yes.
So that's why I'm asking the board what they wanna do.
Your counsel might have an opinion on it. You might wanna wait for counsel.
We could. But it's a workshop. We can't vote anything in a workshop. And it would be too late.
It's a week before the meeting.
It would be too late. It would be a week.
No, I understand that, but it's possible that if we have an agreement signed, we have to have a formal agreement signed with this particular counselor before we ask his opinion on anything. And if we have that agreement signed in advance, we can certainly ask a question. Cause he might have a particular way of wanting to deal with that.
Yeah, so this says that the planning board may hold a public hearing within 30 days of the filing of the completed application. Shall publish the time and date. So it says may, doesn't say must, so we can do it or not do it. I guess what I'm looking for is a consensus from the four of us on whether we want or need to have a hearing or not so that I'm not making decisions solely on my own.
We haven't seen a final applicant, application. Have we?
No. No, we have not.
So.
That's why it's an if and, so if it comes in with significant changes, we have a hearing. If it doesn't, we don't have a hearing. Was what I had presented.
Okay. So state your motion again. I'm sorry.
Um.
Who, and, and before, before you do that, who, who determines if it's, um, significant that you should do?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I said, one of us, we can choose whoever does that.
Yeah, that's your part of the motion.
Yes, I wasn't quite done.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
So, I, that's what I said, is, is some, one of us, you, we can decide what it is, so. Alright, so the motion is to not, not hold a public hearing for the applicant, a third public hearing for the applicant, if, when their application comes in, it does not have significant changes. If there are significant changes as determined by Jamie. You got it? Is that okay?
It's fine.
As determined by Jamie, then we will go ahead and have a public hearing the night of the meeting and Carly will post it and we'll proceed that way. And that'll be the third public hearing for the project. I think that was all good.
Is there a second?
Wow, okay. I'll let, I'll put out that, alright, fine. So then how do we know whether we're having a public hearing for this application or not? Are we just not gonna have one?
Well, can we just beat on the, beat on the, on the 10th and determine that or not?
No, they're coming on the 10th most likely.
We don't know if they're coming.
That's why I'm, I'm making, trying to preemptively have a plan.
We don't even know if they're coming yet, right? How can we, I think we're crazy for voting stuff that we don't know it's gonna show up or not.
Okay, so when they bring the application and Carly asks me what to do, what do I tell her? What do I tell her?
Normally this decision is made after the, what's it called? Not preliminary review, but.
Well, see, that's the thing. We don't have it right after the sketch in the workshop, yes.
Right.
That's usually when it's made. They've already had that. Right, and that's why this is different and unique and that's why I felt we should probably decide. It says we may have one, which means we have to decide whether we're gonna have it or not.
I don't think anybody's gonna always have to come, so I don't think it does a whole lot to have a hearing. And, you know, I mean, I don't think, I really don't see anybody coming.
Okay, so then someone make a motion that we just don't have a hearing. I guess, so this wasn't seconded, so.
But procedurally, we're supposed to have a hearing, right? We just got told by the appeals board that we're not following our procedure, right?
Well, this is different. You are correct, but this is different because this is, would be the third hearing for this and it doesn't say that you have to have a hearing every time that they come for you. That's why this was a unique situation. This is why I wanted to decide amongst ourselves what we're gonna do, a hearing or no hearing. So if you don't like my motion and there was no second, then someone do another one, but I think we should decide for the fairness of Carly who's gonna have to deal with this.
Right.
When it comes in, what we're gonna do, if we're gonna have a hearing or not have a hearing. Well, if the ordinance says planning board may hold a hearing and not must, then if the board is silent, then there would be no hearing. Is that how the language would read to you? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, I'm just concerned because this is going through the appeals process. That the, the council will have, want to take a different approach.
Right, and that's why.
And that approach would be?
Something other than what we're used to. Because we don't know what we don't know.
Yeah, where is the? Yeah, it says.
And I'm not suggesting that that will happen. I'm just saying.
Right, it says, it says may, right, and it says may.
Yeah. Right, and it says may, and so we did, and we did twice, so I personally don't think we need to a third time. But that's me. I would just like a consensus from the board of what we're gonna do so that whether we have a hearing or not have a hearing, so Carly knows what to do.
Could we say that we, we can decide now that we will not hold a public hearing?
Yes.
But when the applicant comes in and we, as a board, with the applicant sitting here, feel that there are significant changes, can be denied in your request of hearing. Because I think that goes to what Jim is saying.
Right.
Is that presumably they're not, I mean, the, what I don't wanna do is I don't wanna say they don't need a hearing and then have something change and then come in and say, well, we voted that they did not need a hearing.
Right.
And then I also don't want it to be single discretion without discussion at the table.
Right.
Whether that's significant change.
Oh, yeah, I got you.
So, I think we we can.
We take no action and, I mean, we already have two public hearings. I mean, I, yeah, we'll see what they bring in. If there's no substantial changes, then we're good. But rather than at that time, it says we may have a hearing and, and we could.
Yeah.
But, and, and we can decide then. And we can't really decide now, you know, based on what may or may not happen.
Yeah.
As a, as a stance, Cali wouldn't arrange a public hearing because we haven't requested. And the applicant hasn't requested one. And we still may do it if, once we, they've come back and, you know, they make a proposal to us. And, you know, I'd rather, you know, prefer to win the heat in front of us and we're, you know, we can look at it and say, okay, well, this, this is a lot different or this is not different and, you know, proceed. That's appropriate.
We can do that too. It doesn't say anything in here specifically on, um, what to do if it comes in substantially changed by there. The, the subdivision portion of it is much clearer on all of these different things that we're talking about. There's not much in here about any of that, what we should or should not do.
But I don't think it would be advantageous for them to come in and significantly change it.
No, no, I.
If we're making a decision now to say that if they substantially change it and they come to the table to discussion, then we can push it. then we could push it, or not push it, that's not the right words. We could, um, deny the application and ask for a public hearing, which would be a public hearing at that application, then I'd set up two more months.
Or post one.
So, right, or post one, right, so, so it's not advantageous for them to significantly change.
Right, you table for more information or more, you know, yeah.
Right.
That, that's why this is tough, is, is we always, the, the preliminary means eighty percent is there, the ninety-five percent is there, then the final is when a hundred percent of it's there. This talks nothing about final or preliminary, so it's just kind of in purgatory until it's finished.
Yeah, right, but if we're, but if we're following what the town's ordinance is saying, and beating the town's ordinance, there's no reason to not make a vote on it.
Correct, um. All right, so I had a motion. There was no second. Is there another one or are we going to just let it lie?
I, I don't have one.
I don't.
Okay.
Hello, Madam Jay person? Does she have that one?
No, that was mine.
Okay.
So it comes in, and I guess based on that, there's one here. All right.
Just comes in as a site plan application.
Site plan application, no final, no preliminary, I mean, no nothing, it was a site plan application. Um, and then again, great questions we can ask. You know, all things set aside, this whole section, we rewrote it five years ago, six years ago, I think it was two thousand eighteen we did it. And then it just never made it into the changes that year. So it's written, so it's really laid out, much better and easier to follow and understand. So, just one of the votes. Can't think, is there anything else?
We want to approve the minutes.
What's all the done for? We did that.
Okay.
We did that.
All right.
I'm trying to think if there's something else. But maybe not. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, done.
Thank you.